Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call this Fairfield County Council meeting to order on this day, Monday, October the 27th, 2025. At this time, we would pledge allegiance, please do the pledge allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, we have the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would like to request that council amend the agenda this evening to add an executive session to discuss and receive legal advice regarding the recent news of Santee Cooper's selection of a potential purchaser of the two partially completed nuclear reactors at the V.C. Sumner Plant located in Jenkinsville, and that would be pursuant to South Carolina Code 30-4-70A2. This is not an action item, and no votes of council will be taken.
Executive session, a discussion as described by the county attorney.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, you heard the amendment, a motion. Are you prepared for questions? All in favors?
Aye.
Opposes? The record shows seven zero. Now, are you prepared to vote for the amendment with the amendment attached? Are you prepared to vote? All in favor? Opposes? The record shows seven zero. Now, we're down to invocation. Mr. Dan Roof.
Let us pray. Heaven Father, we thank you for this day and the rain we are receiving. Lord, we ask your blessings on this county, and this state, and this nation. Lord, and as we make decisions for this county, we just ask that everything we do and say would be according to your will. And Lord, as we leave this place, we just ask travel mercy to everyone's respective homes. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Roof. Now, we're down to approval of the minutes for regular meeting, 10, 13, 25. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Or if the motion is second, that we accept the minutes for the last meeting. Prepared to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposes? The record shows seven zero. Public presentation done. Public comment session. Dr. Robert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of council, Katie Titus Odom.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members. Katie Titus Odom, and former chairman of the Fairfield County Animal Control Ad Hoc Committee, just speaking in support of the version of the animal control ordinance before you today. It does reflect the draft, by and large, that was created by the Animal Control Advisory Committee. So, six out of seven members fully support that. Just a reminder, that is a compromise document, by and large, approved by, you know, vast margins unanimously in most cases. Just wanted to make ourselves available as a resource to y'all, as you all consider this, but would encourage y'all to move that forward without amendments. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you very much. Now, we're down to public hearing done. Next is the ordinance resolution and orders. First reading by title only, 851. Dr. Roberts, if you would?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to repeal ordinance number 737, and to establish the rules and regulations pertaining to animal control in Fairfield County. Revise Chapter Four, Animals of the Code of Ordinances, Fairfield County, South Carolina, and other matters related thereto.
Second.
Okay, the motion is second. All in favor? Opposes? The record shows seven zero. Boarding commission minutes, none. Board commission appointments, none. Old business, none. New business, the East Peach Road Industrial Park Improvement Contract for Action.
Mr. Carpenter. Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have in front of you tonight for your approval, the contract for the East Peach Road Industrial Park Improvements. This was a project approved by council previously. Grant funds were received to pay for the cost of this. This is not the industrial park where BOMAG is located, but land the county has started to purchase further down Peach Road, close to 321. What this would do is it would build an entrance into the park with a monumental sign, so people know that there is and will be an industrial park there. Again, these are grant funds from the state of South Carolina. The county has previously approved it, but we wanted to put it back in front of you because there was a delay in it actually being awarded, to make sure that you were okay still.
You've heard Mr. Carpenter's report. Can I get a motion?
I'd like to have a question.
All right, let's do the motion first.
Oh, sorry.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. All right, question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is new to me, Mr. Carpenter. So, there was a grant money to cover this, is that correct? And is the grant money sufficient to cover the entire cost?
The initial grant was not sufficient. However, there was remaining funding on another grant that was finished and closed out. So, the state allowing us to move that remaining funding into this, which fully covers its cost.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you heard the motion. Second, are you prepared to vote? All in favor? Opposes? The record shows seven zero. Okay, now we are down to county administrative report. Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I requested the ability to share information with this council, but also the general public. As you know, recently, we started discussing the possibility of putting for referendum a capital project sales tax. And there's a lot of confusion in the minds of some over the existing local option sales tax, and where that money goes. So, I just wanted to, again, go over for the councils and the public's purpose. A local option sales tax is allowed by state law that this county passed in a referendum some years ago, a one penny sales tax. The purpose of this sales tax is tax relief. So, the money collected from there has to go to tax relief. So, when you get your tax notices on your car, or your house, or anything in this county, if you look, there's a line item that says lost, L-O-S-T, credit. And that credit is an offset to the taxes you pay. That is the direct benefit of that penny sales tax being assigned against the taxes that are paid. So, for example, in 23, I'm sorry, 24, 25, it's estimated that $3.3 million was collected. We haven't got the final number yet, but 3.3 million. That money was then levied back against the taxes people paid, lowering their tax bill. So, when people say, "Where'd the money go?" It went back into their taxes and lowered what they would actually pay. The capital project sales tax, on the other hand, would be money that would be used to build something that does not currently exist. We cannot use the local option sales tax money for that purpose. So, that money has to go back to our citizens. So, I just wanted to make sure people understood the difference. One is a direct offset to your taxes, lowering your tax bill. Then, the other would be building projects in this county. So...
Anything else?
So, Mr. Carpenter, the one that's on the books now, since '06, will stay on the books forever?
Yes, ma'am.
It won't ever run out.
There's no sunset to it. That's correct.
And this one will last far?
If a capital project was, it would last for a maximum of seven years, the initial time. And then, it would roll off, and you'd have to vote it on again.
So, they would have two cents sales tax, rather than the one cent sales tax that they're paying?
That is correct. But again, one of which goes back into their pocket, essentially. But yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Mr. Cobal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one small correction. I just looked at my tax notice today, and I had questions. So, I talked with our auditor, Ann Bass. And the line item that shows the credit is actually called the county sales tax. So, if you look on your tax notice, it will say county sales tax. But just to the left of that is a note that says, "This is from the local option sales tax." So, just wanted to make you aware. And apparently, I think, Mr. Carpenter, what I understood was this applies to houses and motor vehicles and watercraft. So, there's a factor that applies across, spread across all of those different properties. Is that correct? Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, clerk of council report, none. County council time. Anyone? Mr. Roof?
Yeah, I just waited till I asked you this. I talked earlier to you about property tax. Have people call me about the increase? And, you know, we had a millage increase and reassessment in the same year, which has caused a bigger increase. And so, I think maybe you mentioned that maybe at some point I'll let you address that, how people could talk to you and discuss these. And also, people can, you know, appeal it, and it won't hurt anything. But I'll let you explain what you...
Thank you, Mr. Ruth. Okay, two things. First of all, you cannot appeal your taxes, but you can appeal your assessment. So, we always will encourage citizens, when you get your assessment notices, to appeal it. The worst thing that will happen is it stays the same. But I don't know that I've ever seen that it doesn't somewhat work in your favor. So, you cannot appeal your taxes, but you can appeal your assessment notice. I would be glad to set up a time, an open meeting for citizens to come. I'll get Ms. Bass and finance staff, and we can have staff sit out here, and any citizens that want to bring their tax notices, we can go over and explain where it is, and get into greater detail with them, pull out budgets and what have you, for anyone who wants to do that. People obviously have a lot of questions about taxes. It's their money, and I'd be more than happy to do that. So, I'd be glad to set up kind of an open meeting. Plus, anybody can always call as well.
Anyone else?
Yes, yes. On November the 4th, Don, District Two, and myself, District Three, will have a town hall meeting at the Midford Community Center. My district runs all the way over there, and Don runs up there. We kind of run into each other. So, it will be at 6:00 at the Midford Reg Center. If you please pass the word. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Roof?
One more thing. Everybody probably already knows it, but Pick on Ridge Festival's this weekend. So, if everybody can come to that, hopefully it'll be good.
Where's that local? I did forget one thing to remind everybody. On Friday, November, I guess, what, 7th, we will be having a veterans luncheon at the Veterans Center. So, please, anyone who is a veteran, or encourage our veterans to come out and be recognized and thanked for their service.
Okay, I just want to mention to the council meeting, on last Wednesday, we were supposed to have had our capital project workshop, but because of some things that came up, that we couldn't have the meeting. We need to set that up sometime within the next couple weeks. Ms. Robbins, I'd like for you to reach out to each one of the council members, and we'll come up with a date as to when we can do this, because we need to do it sooner than later. So, once she contact, you please be expedient about responding back to her as to when we can do this. Okay, I appreciate that. Okay? Now, we're down to executive session. Item A is the receipt of legal advice covered under the attorney-client privileges pertaining to the ordinance 851, prudent to South Carolina Code 30-4-70-A2. And then, we also have the Santee Cooper, B. Santee Cooper, coming. Can I get a motion? Go into executive session. Motion is second, that we go into executive session. All in favor? Nays? Okay, the record shows seven zero. We're now in executive session. May I get a motion to come out of executive session? Motion, second, that we come out of executive session? Prepare to vote? All in favor? Opposed? That record show seven to zero. Like to make for record, there was no action taken while we were in executive session. May I, is there another motion?
To adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? We're now adjourned.